So you're gonna be banging the hammer tonight. Just banging the hammer, yeah. Generally.
Little louder, okay.
Yeah. There you go. All right. The meeting is in order. All right. So, um, I think before the announcements, right? Or after?
After.
After the announcements. Okay. So we're gonna make a couple of quick announcements. You wanna read the announcements or? Well, I don't know if you can read this. She may be like, no. I'm not gonna do that. I can if you want. It's up to you. I'm just asking. Okay. You got one too. All right. That's right. Good. Your first role. Delegate for the radio mayor. Bang. All right. So our announcements this evening are the next mayor and town council meeting will be on Monday, December 10th. And we only have one meeting in December. Now, everybody's gonna really be broken up about that, but, uh... So make sure to attend. Santa's arrival on Main Street is on December 8th. And what time is he arriving?
At 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah. So I think the time changed a little bit from the past. So a little bit earlier this year, 5:00 o'clock, Santa's coming. So make sure you're down here for that too, 'cause we're gonna do the Christmas tree lighting at that same time, and you can light the Christmas tree and be the Santa, right? All right. And then Mary Main Street is on December 8th as well. Um, and it's on the other page. Mary Main Street. What time is Mary Main Street?
Noon to 4:00, I believe.
Noon to 4:00. All righty. Okay. Before we get to public comments, the only one thing I wanted to do, 'cause we were gonna jump right into the audit, but Doug Howard's here, our current county commissioner, and I know, did you wanna say a couple words? I didn't wanna hold you up, so I was gonna let you go first, but you're welcome to stay all night and hang out with the incoming county commissioner, Ed Rothstein.
Yeah. I've gotta say that as a former accountant, I can't think of anything more exciting than sitting through the audit.
Right.
With all its great detail.
Yeah. So I thought it was very bad.
That was done for my benefit. I really appreciate it.
It was.
Yeah, no. It's awesome. And much to my amazement, I always thought Mayor Shaw was the junior mayor, so this is all over the experience.
Hit the hammer.
I know you got a long meeting, and I just wanted to take a moment and, you know... Next week, at this time, Commissioner-elect Rothstein will be sworn in, and I'll be finishing out my eight years as county commissioner. And I just wanted to come down and formally thank each and every one of you, the mayor, the town council, the folks on staff, the folks that we've worked with, Chief Spalding, for the tremendous partnership we've had. I have to say, I think amongst all of this new configuration that we had with five-by-district, I was very blessed to be partnered with the town of Sykesville. I wasn't a resident at the time. I become so enamored with the town, I, you know, could move, you know, do nothing else than move here, so... And during that time, I don't think it was the easiest. We had some challenges. We had some things to really work through. I think it was interesting that there were times when we were pulling in the same direction, and yet sometimes we were kinda negotiating with each other on things like Warfield and some of the projects that we had. But all the time, I felt like it was a tremendous degree of congeniality, a willingness to work together. I was very proud of the work that we did together to get Warfield where it was, but also other projects along the way. And I also wanna thank you, because during that process, while I think our folks did a good job to step up, it took a tremendous amount of trust and faith to take your rules and regulations and put them in the hands of somebody else to get that done. And so I just wanna say that I think I've been very blessed. I think we've had the best of relationships. I hope you feel the same way. I know you're gonna be in very good hands, but I wanted to just thank each and every one of you for the partnership. I know Sykesville will have tremendous success going forward, but you've been one of the very positive aspects of my serving as commissioner over the last eight years, so just wanted to thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Give him a round of applause. Eight years of service. Thank you. Yeah. We'll even give you a handshake.
How about the junior mayor?
There we go. Yeah, yeah. He's like, the rest of you can... We'll catch up with you later. Anyway, well, thanks, Ned, really, for... It has been a great partnership. We really do appreciate it. And we're looking forward to Ed picking up the baton now and taking us to the next place, so thank you so much. But it has been great. I appreciate everything done and, you know, all your insight and stuff was great. So thank you so much. We wish you all the best, and I know you're really gonna miss local politics. You won't have anything to do with your time, and you'll be...
I'll probably come up to you all the time.
Yeah.
See what's going on.
That's awesome. You're welcome if you're feeling like...
It's gonna be a board of commissioners or something.
Yeah. Get a reminder of why you're not doing it. You need to stop up there anyway. But thank you. Okay. So on to our next thing. We're gonna get to the public comments, but we wanted to, without further ado, bring up the accountants who are gonna go over the audit from Rigor, Raymond, and Help. Junior Mayor does have some questions. He's known some discrepancies in your presentation.
Okay. Fabulous.
I'm just kidding. Just in case, right? Please the door open for you. Excuse me, ma'am, I'm not sure about this.
All right. Ashley and I are happy to be here to go over your audit reports with you. You have the full audit in front of you. We're just going to do a quick overview with you this evening on PowerPoint presentation. You have... There are some required communications that we need to go over with you. Just... You have a letter that also details this, so I'm just gonna highlight it. But the audit responsibilities, each year you have an engagement letter that outlines what your responsibilities are and what our responsibilities are. And then significant accounting policies. You really had no new accounting policies that impacted your financial statements this year. There were some new accounting standards, but they didn't impact the presentation of your statements. As far as audit adjustments and uncorrected misstatements, they were provided with the management representation letter, and we went through all of those with Evelyn and Aretha. We did not encounter any issues or difficulties. And the communication of material weaknesses and other recommendations is in a separate letter. The only material weakness that you had, which relates to Warfield, which is ongoing, but thankfully, this will be the last year for that, since Warfield was not included in your financial statements. As far as your financial statements, just letting you know that there are accounting estimates included in your financial statements. The largest estimates that you would have would be the collectibility of taxes and other receivables, the depreciation on your capital assets, your accrued compensated absences, and your net pension liability. The net pension liability would be your largest one, that's based on the actuarial reports, life expectancy, and also investment earnings and retirement. All those types of things are into the estimates that are in your financial statements. As far as accounting disclosures that are significant in your financial statements, we'll talk about Warfield a lot tonight, but that is considered a special item that happened to the town, since the sale did go through at the end of June. And then as far as the Warfield Development Corporation, there were loans that were paid off, that Warfield paid the town. And then notes receivable, there is a million-dollar note receivable that is sitting on the town's books, that you loaned the money to the purchaser of the Warfield complex. Your net position of fund balances, you have a lot of money that is restricted for certain purposes. We'll go through that here in our presentation. You have the ongoing cost-sharing stormwater mitigation project with Carroll County, so you're committed through 2020. That's about a $39,000 a year expense that you're committed to. We'll talk briefly about the new governmental accounting standards. Again, there wasn't anything really significant this year for you. And then subsequent events, you did join the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System law enforcement program, the Officers' Pension System, July 1st. So that's disclosed in your statements. As far as the objective of the audit, it was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and the purpose of the audit is to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that financial statements are free of material misstatement. We do that through test basis of examination of your supporting amounts and disclosures, assessing principles, utilizing management's significant estimates, and evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. So as far as your audit opinion, you always have a very unique opinion. The opinion has different types of opinions that we're giving. So you have an unmodified, which is a clean opinion, on both the governmental activities of the town, which is a long-term view of it, and the fund financial statements of the town, which is considered near-term. But you added an adverse opinion on the discreetly presented component unit of the town. That's the Warfield Development Corporation that was not audited, and it should've been included in the town's books, because it was a component unit of the town.
And just for clarity, the reason we didn't do that is because of the cost of the audit, based on the amount of activity going on.
Yes.
So now that it has been closed, it triggers an audit, we're gonna have a full audit, and we will have a fully clean audit finally.
Yes.
With the state's blessing for 2020, right?
No, it'll be for 2019.
So it will be in 2019.
It will be.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah. So we're all excited about that, 'cause it has been causing us some problems with that.
Right. You will make the state happy.
The cost of the audit didn't make sense for the amount of activity that was going on.
Yeah.
$15,000 a year for the audit, when you're doing no financial activity is pretty... So, anyway, so just wanted to clarify why that's like that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And one modification that did come off of your audit opinion this year was, since the sale did happen before the end of June, we were able to remove the modification about the pollution remediation obligation, 'cause that was never included in your financial statements, and it should've been. So that went away since the complex was sold. So that did not modify your opinion. Just wanted to speak briefly about the downtown Sykesville connection. Want to caution you about the component unit consideration. The Warfield was a component unit, and that's why you were in the position of modifying the opinion. And I just wanna give you the current facts of the downtown Sykesville connection. It's a legally separate nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3). The town holds one voting seat on the board. The town has a memo of understanding with the organization that's renewable annually, and the town would not be required to run the programs provided by the DSC if they cease to exist. However, and I just wanna tell you the reasons you're not a component unit for this year ending June 30, 18. It was because the town does not control the organization, the only one board seat, the town's support is renewable annually, so long-term support is not promised, and then the town would not be required to run the programs, as already mentioned. But the funding intent is one-third program, one-third town, and one-third another local government. So I just want you to be careful that you don't end up being the primary contributor to this organization. That would be one factor that could push you, you know, into a component unit situation. So you don't want to, you know, be more than 50%. There's other factors, but that would be one that would be considered, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. As far as some highlights specific to this past fiscal year, you had an increase in cash investments of almost $454,000, and you did invest an additional $800,000 in the CD this year. You have $1.1 million in escrow related to the Warfield complex. And now you've already committed that $1.1 million to pay for renovations, improvements to that area. So the town has the money in escrow, but won't actually receive the money. Million-dollar note receivable from a complex purchaser, that's due back to the town in June of 2020. And you had an overall increase of $2.3 million in your fund balance. Now, the bulk of that is because of the sale of the Warfield complex. Without the Warfield complex, there was an overall decrease of $337,021. But I do wanna mention that that decrease includes paying off the $525,000 note payable related to the purchase of the 714 Sandusky Road. You did pay that off early. And you had the 2018 budget expected to decrease of $531,000. You received $134,790 during settlement of the sale of the Warfield complex to pay off the principal portions of the note receivable from Warfield Development Corp. So the Warfield Development Corp. paid the town back money that had... You had loaned. So that was that. So just a real quick view there as far as comparing the balance sheets from June 30, 17 to 18. This is as of that particular date. You can see the biggest changes would be right here in the notes and other receivable, and that includes the $1.1 million escrow that I mentioned, and then also the $1 million in note receivable. And then also down here, you can see these non-spendable and restricted fund balances, the big swings there. Again, that relates to the Warfield note and escrow that we just talked about. As far as operating results, the operations were very comparable to prior years. The... You can see the taxes went down slightly, grants down just a little bit. And then the other revenue and financing sources, the reason that is down is because in the prior year, you had $619,000... Well, it went down $619,000, but the prior year had proceeds of $108,000 from a sale of an asset, and then you also had $547,000 loan proceeds related to the Sandusky Road And then as far as the expense section, again, expense is very comparable. The debt service increased significantly, but again, that was paying off that Sandusky note, that you paid it off early. And then the capital outlays, you can see that was a larger decrease, but that was... The decrease was budgeted for. So all in all, you... Well, and just give this total here then. So the special item, the net proceeds from the sale of Warfield Complex, you can see that's $2.6 million. And we'll look at that a little bit further. So your change in fund balance for the year was a positive $2.3 million versus the $265,000 from last year. So for the Warfield Development Corporation, just wanna remind you that it was required to obtain an audit for the final year of operations, so you're gonna be working on that, and that's why you'll get a clean opinion next year. So next year, even though Warfield was sold in your fiscal year, Warfield Development Corp. runs on a calendar year, and so part of the sale is gonna show up again when next year's financial statements with the closeout of the Warfield Development Corp. But as long as everything else goes smoothly, you will have an unmodified opinion next year. So just looking at the summary of the sale of the Warfield Complex, I wanted to break that down for you. So your sales price was $3.1 million, and then you had to pay the state's community trust fund $500,000 in order to get out of the agreement. They wanted, you know, money as the property was sold going forward. So that's a limit. It's any requirement to pay the state anything further. And then you had miscellaneous selling expenses of almost $28,000. So your net proceeds from the sale of Warfield Complex was $2,657,442, which is what we saw on the other screen, the slide. And then, as I mentioned, you didn't actually receive all of that money. A million dollars of that was loaned directly to the purchaser, and then $1.1 million is held in escrow to go towards the town's contributions to renovations. And then there's the $134,790 that you did receive for repayment of loans. So total cash received, $692,232. And then your financial statements, the government financial statements are required to report the governmental... On full accrual. And so that... This slide is showing the full accrual. What we were just previously looking at is what you're used to seeing on your fund statements. So on the full accrual, you had been capitalizing the land and the buildings and taking depreciation on the property related to Warfield. So all in all, you had a net book value of $8.7 million. Now, you didn't pay for all of that. The value of the property was also, you know, what the value of when the state, when you received the property from the state. And then addition... Some additions were... Improvements were made. And then your net proceeds from sale was the $2.6 million, so you had a loss on sale of the Warfield Complex of $6.1 million, if you look at it on the full accrual basis.
Since the property the state gave us for free, we only lost $6 million.
There you go.
Awesome.
Yep.
Are you listening, Governor? Need some help on this one. Hope he's watching Channel 19.
All right. And so this is the government-wide... So this is on the full accrual basis of accounting. So I just wanted to point out this line here, the net property and equipment. You can see it decreased significantly. That's the reduction from the Warfield Complex, the current assets, the big... The increase there, they're the $2 million that we already talked about. And so the net position, you can see there was a decrease, and that relates to that $6 million loss that we talked about. So jumping into your fund balance, you have set aside... Well, you have established a stabilization reserve, and that is defined as 12% of your average actual general fund audited expenditures, excluding capital outlay expenditures for the preceding five years. And so for June 30, 2018, that amounted to $297,615, which is well under the unassigned fund balance that the town has, which is $2.1 million. And that's the breakdown. Whoops, there. Not coming through there. This is... This one is your non-spendable. This is your restricted. This is your assigned. And now, we have another slide that tells you the breakdown. And this is the unassigned, which is your largest piece, which includes the stabilization reserve. So your non-spendable is the $1,065. Again, that includes notes receivable and then prepaid expenses. And then your restricted fund balance of $1.5 million, the largest being the $1.1 million of escrow funds related to the complex. And then the public project funds, the $250,000, that also came from the Warfield settlement as well, that you are required to spend it in a certain way. And then you have almost $213,000 for the Gate House Museum. And then this slide is just showing you have various assigned funds that you have set aside. And so this is going over that. And it goes on further. So you'll see that you have a lot of assignments. All right. And so you did adopt two new accounting pronouncements, but they had no impact, so I'll just mention that. And then going forward, you have two that will come into play, one affecting leases and another one related to debt borrowings. As of now, I do not anticipate either of these impacting your financial statements, but they are coming up. So that is a quick overview for you. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Yes, please.
That's on the 2018 fund financial highlights.
Mm-hmm.
Where you said the 2018 budget expected decrease of $531,000.
Mm-hmm.
What is that from? Is that directly related to the note?
Yeah.
Uh...
That's...
That's...
If you look at your complete fund financial statements, I mean, your complete packet of financial statements that you have, on page 47. Maybe. Sorry. Which?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Are you on...
Which page?
47.
47?
Oh, oh.
I thought you was getting a wrong page number.
Okay. Okay. So you have two budget columns there. You can see the first, original budget, and then the final budget column. I was speaking from the final budget column, 'cause you do budget amendments throughout the year. And so the third line from the bottom, the net change in fund balance, that was the $531.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any other questions on the presentation? Ellen, any questions?
No. All right. We thank Evelyn and Aretha for all their hard work.
Yeah. No doubt. So thank you all for your work on that, and definitely Evelyn, Aretha, all the staff who work on that budget stuff. Thank you so much. 'Cause it's never fun. We... You got the interesting cat thing that says audit time on it that Karen did. It's just pretty cool. Looks a little stressed out, too.
We're all so much.
Yeah. So thank you so much. We're so looking forward to getting the Warfield complex done and having a clean audit, so that's coming up next, and they're gonna handle that for us, too. So thank you for that. So great. Hopefully, we got you in and out, right? You can hit the hammer. See? Oh, whoa. It's not coming around. Okay. All right. So our next item... I know that was fun, wasn't it? It's not the best part. It's a good part, but without any money, nothing else happens. All right. All right. Okay. So now, public comments, right? We can get to the public comments. Is there any public comments this evening? We did have a sheet, so hopefully you had it, and everybody signed in, I guess, but there's a... Do you have any comments? Okay. All right. Here none. We'll move right on then to the treasures report. Evelyn, you're up.
Good evening, Evelyn Sweet, town treasurer. It's kinda hard to follow Wanda, but that's the way it works.
No, it's good.
Our September treasures report is not quite as exciting as our year-end financial statements, but it was a good month for the town. We collected the large grant payment for our highway user revenue that we collect once a year. We were able to... We had collected the rest of the proceeds for the early incentive to close Warfield and forwarded that off to Warfield. And there's not much out of the ordinary that happened, other than those items. But I believe I've answered Julia's previous questions. Does anybody else have any questions for tonight?
Any questions for Evelyn on the...
I do not.
Audit, no? Okay. That's a good sign. Yeah. Thank you very much, and again, thanks for all your work on the audit itself.
Thank you.
Glad to see that part completed.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the September 2018 treasures report.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. So we can gently... Okay. That's perfect. Treasures report is approved. All right.
Do we need a vote to accept the audit report?
That's a good question. Do we need to make a motion to accept the audit or not?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. One last thing before we get moving. I was supposed to do my good evening presentation tonight, so I do wanna remind everybody of some decorum changes. We're trying to get some good decorum here, so we're working to ensure that the meetings run smoothly, professionally, and show respect for everyone's time. So if you are here tonight and wanna make a comment, even though we were past the public comment period, but the cards are up front here, so please fill them out. You can either present it yourself or hand them to the town clerk. If you are addressing the new item, please come to the podium during the public comment period if you have a statement to make. And also note that the public comments are limited to three minutes per person. To maintain decorum during the meetings, please do not speak for the audience. And if you have questions or comments that arise during the course of the evening, please Sarah Towne, after the meeting, she'll assist you with those. For those who are presenting this evening when your item arises, please come up to the podium, state your name and affiliation prior to beginning, and we appreciate your cooperation. That way, it'll be... Everybody'll know who you are, and it'll be recorded as... It should be. Okay. The next chief here up. So public safety reporter is up.
Very good. Good evening, everyone.
To maintain decorum during the meetings, please do not speak for the audience. And if you have questions or comments that arise during the course of the evening, please, Sarah, town manager, after the meeting, she'll assist you with those. For those who are presenting this evening when your item arises, please come up to the podium, state your name and affiliation prior to beginning, and we appreciate your cooperation. That way it'll be, everybody'll know who you are, and it'll be recorded as. It should be. Okay, the next, uh, chief here up, so public safety reporter is up.
Very good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Chief Spalding, Sykesville Police Department.
We have a rather large, uh, public safety report to cover here. Covers the period October 15th through the 18th. I think it's because we had the work session, we didn't, uh, report on, uh, the last time, so. During this time period, we handled a total of 888 events. As I usually do, we're gonna just highlight, uh, the most important parts, and then I'll open it up to any questions you may have. So during this period, we handled 25 assist other agencies, 21 community policing events, 32 incident reports, which are contained in your packet, pages two and three, 444 patrol checks, 87 traffic enforcement initiatives, again, for a total of 888 events. Now entertain any questions you may have about any of the 32 incident reports. See a lot of good police work there.
Chief, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I noticed that we have, where you have a lot of visitors out of town that are coming to the town, uh, to the police department to make, um, I don't know, inquiries that aren't town-related. Is that normal, or is that, it just seem like this?
What were you referring to in particular? I mean, we get visitors all the time, but you mean from?
People reporting to the Sykesville Police on events that are happening outside of town.
Oh, that happens, absolutely. Absolutely every day. Yeah, a lot of people still think the, the greater Sykesville area, you know, is part of the town, we get calls every day. And people actually come to the station to report an incident, where unfortunately, we have to refer them to the sheriff's office and the state police.
Okay.
Chief, I have a few questions.
Please.
Number on, uh, it's in 244, uh, which was, uh, called North of Brumman. Would that be considered assist other agencies, since that's outside of town limit?
Should have been, um, for whatever reason, they captured it, uh, this way, I guess just because, uh, the nature of the event. Uh, the person was eventually, uh, EP'd. And so we, we did play a fairly significant role, but, uh, do you remember that one, Sarah?
I do.
But I believe a trooper showed up, since it's technically outside of town, and our officer decided to document it that way, but it could have been any of the way.
I believe it was one of those new act of work.
Right. Yeah, the new ERPO.
Okay. And, number 274 with the, um, unfortunately, the, uh, those KKK, uh, leaflets that were, were distributed. I did read the, uh, the memo from, uh, from Aretha about that, and just wanted to give an update on that, if you have any other information. I know that Sunday I was at church, and actually one was, um, you know, they found one at the church as well.
Yeah, it was a total of 13 found here in town, various places. You know, we collected them, uh, notified the Maryland Center for, this is MCAC, which we're required to do. We did coordinate with other jurisdictions, as you know, there were several other jurisdictions that had the same thing.
Ellicott City.
Mount Airy, Frederick, Ellicott City, even Eldersburg. But to date, there's been, you know, no one identified as being responsible for that.
We are gonna follow up with headmasters, because I know they have video outside.
Thought we'd already done that.
Uh, I think we'll, Jason will be up tomorrow. Every other storefront on Main Street didn't have any video outside. It is my belief that they were in a car and just kind of tossed them out.
That's what it appears, yeah, with the bird seed and the plastic bag. Very unfortunate that it happened here in our town.
And then, uh, the last one, 267, uh, car was marked in the Mack lot to be towed. Is that, uh, is that because of there too long, or?
Believe this one in particular, we had two, two events where vehicles, uh, were, uh, actually by the good work of our police officers, found to be, either have expired registrations. What we normally do is attempt to obviously notify the owner, let him know they're in violation of our junk ordinance statute, uh, give them 10 days to remove it or, or it's, or it's towed. I think in this one particular incident, the Mack lot, it was an expired registration. Attempts were made to reach the owner, uh, or I believe unsuccessful. So, uh, we waited the required 10 days and removed it. But it's, it's good police work that they're out there, you know, looking for these type of violations, and removing vehicles that, in this case, had sat there for well over a month, a month or two.
And one last one, I saw the, uh, the simple assault on the police officer.
Yes, well, he's, he's, he's recovered.
I was gonna say, did our officer recover?
He has, yeah, I think his, uh, feelings were hurt more than anything. No, again, that was at Craft Beer Festival Day, and things got a little rowdy, and, uh, one particular person maybe had a little too much to drink, and Sergeant Kilgore did a great job of trying to, um, diffuse the situation, give her multiple, you know, opportunities to just walk away and do the right thing. She didn't do it, so unfortunately, uh, she has been, or is in the process of being charged. He didn't arrest her that night, just because we had so many things going on, but later applied for charges, and she will be charged. Mr. Mayor.
I have a question I've been meaning to ask for a bit, but there seem to be so many on here, this report, um, with respect to the patient-on-patient assaults, um, at the nursing home.
Every day.
You must have missed the meeting I brought this up.
Birch Manor, yeah.
Go ahead. So, I guess my question is, are in most of these cases, the patients with cognitive impairments?
Yes, all of them.
Okay, and so are you privy to any attempts on, or plans on the parts of administration? I know they, the new administration, uh, at the nursing home, uh, within the last few months, um, new, the new ownership. I personally reached out to them and, and introduced myself as a neighbor to the facility, um, and it seems that there might be some, the new leadership might, um, might be more likely to, uh, put into process some sort of, um, education for the employees so as to diffuse these types of situations. Are you aware of any kind of such plans, or?
No, but it would be a good opportunity for me to meet with the new administration, and at the very least, discuss these matters, because it's, it's a quite frequent occurrence. And as long as a patient alleges that he or she was assaulted, whether by another patient or by staff, statutorily, they're required to report it to us, and we're required to take a report.
Are they oftentimes one of only the few patients that are consistently making these?
There are some repeat offenders.
Okay.
Um, but in other cases, it's, it's just any, any of the patients.
It sounds like to me that if there's a dementia unit, or if these individuals have dementia, and they're not specifically on a dementia unit, in either event, there should be some training involved to minimize, to minimize that.
I would be in favor of that.
Yeah.
Because we, we, uh, our officers' time are, are taken up by quite a few of the people.
I'd be glad to actually get you guys some information that perhaps you could pass along to them with respect to some training that might be helpful.
That would be excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and I think we identified a couple things with the challenges with the traffic down there from the beer and wine festival, I think, so maybe that's something to bring up with the next, the next, before the planning for the next one, because I think if they want entrance there, the barriers didn't quite work out the way they were supposed to, which may have led to the incidents of people crossing inappropriately, there was a lot going on there, so.
It was a hectic intersection that I always, for some reason, assign myself to.
Yeah.
I guess just so I can see it firsthand, uh, it's a busy day, there with a lot of, a lot of crisscrossing, a lot of traffic.
Yeah, I wanted to go down and leave the barriers myself, but I'm like, that's just gonna turn out worse. So, it was like, we need to talk about that at the next one, so I think a part of the planning, we would have some stuff to try to.
I think the barriers did work, did, were nice though on Baltimore Drive.
Yeah, they worked on one side.
Yeah.
Just needed them on the other. Problem was, everybody was discovering all random, it was a mess, I don't know. God bless you guys for making that out and getting us through that safely, I appreciate that.
It did a great job.
Yeah, it was a lot of work in there.
Assistance from our artillery was helpful.
Yep.
All's well in end.
Yeah, no, knock on wood, right, we'll just get it worked out for the next time.
Right. I would like to point out again, not because he's here, but for some reason, he always manages to show up to these meetings, when I'm going to applaud him. But if, if you noticed on incident 263, again, great police work on Sergeant Kilgore's part. Was doing a patrol check of Warfield, as, as all our officers do on a daily basis. Noticed a car there, and noticed, noticed some individuals, uh, out of the car, stopped, uh, did his due diligence, checked on them to find out that, uh, basically, uh, up to, I think it was 10, um, subjects ranging in age from 17 to 21, decided to come to Warfield from Baltimore County, and decided to ignore our new trespass signs, and actually decided to enter several, uh, the service building, despite our many signs and warnings, and so Sergeant Kilgore, again, excellent job, ended up charging five of them, uh, released the other, or I think it was five or six, only because there was no proof they had entered the property or any of the buildings, but, um, again, we continue to, uh, you know, do this and then find people from, from time to time, uh, but it doesn't seem to deter any of the other ones from coming over there and sightseeing, or doing whatever they, they do. So I think you, when you asked, uh, didn't you see the signs, they said, yeah, but we didn't think it, it meant that we couldn't, uh, like, come, come in the building. And we said, we, we thought that meant only that we couldn't go inside the building, not come onto the property, so, uh, pretty foolish, but, you know.
Is there a security plan being worked on?
We are working on that.
Talking about that for quite some time now, but we need to get this going.
The fencing and the lights, and I've been in constant contact with Steve McLeith about that, and it's supposed to be in progress.
Okay.
Which I think it'll be a huge deterrent. The lighting and the fence, I think it will go a long way to stop this sort of thing. Make our job easier, uh, to see who's there.
Yeah, definitely some of the cameras too, I mean, I would suggest maybe some of those kind, at construction sites like you guys, I mean, there are a couple of construction people here.
They're talking about cameras.
I know where you put the police light up and the thing, just while construction's going on, to help discourage theft during, uh, I mean, every little thing helps, it's something that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that one should be considered right away.
You can't be over there 24/7.
No.
Unfortunately, we can't do it. And that's all I really have.
Any other questions for the chief? Any questions for the chief?
No.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Want to hit the hammer? Okay, that's a crazy one. All right, great. All right, next item of business. Council committee reports are already sent in, correct? All right, the consent agenda. We have 2018-79 council minutes from October 22nd, 2018-80 minutes from October 24th, 81 minutes from, uh, November 13th, 82 is the reappointment of Brumman Fog to the Historic District Commission, 83 is the approval of town council meeting schedule for the, an holiday schedule. Is everybody okay with every item, or does anybody want to pull any?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of 2018-80 minutes from October 24th, because Mr. Keenan was not present for that meeting, so we can all vote on the rest.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, we approve that gently. There you go.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 24th.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
I will see.
Okay, that would approve. There you go, she's getting it down and. All right, okay, um, so that's good, so into our open session items. Uh, first item this evening is, uh, very special, the proclamation for Detective Earl Cratch for his 10 years of service to the Sykesville Police Department Junior CSI Academy. So this is pretty special, so, thank you so much, so I guess, um, how do you want to handle presenting that? Are you gonna go up and chief, or are you gonna present it? Or you want the mayor to present it, or how do you want to do that? You want to come up and get a picture with the, Mr. Cratch? Yeah, you want to sign it now? Oh, I'm sorry. Sign that, and then we'll pass it around, and we'll present this with everybody's signature on it. And then we'll get a picture.
Do you want to give him an opportunity to speak while you?
Yeah, why don't you do that, why don't you come on up, Earl, and share, um, some more of your wonderful crime fighting? You can come to the podium if you want, and then you'll get on TV, and you'll be forever memorialized. Yep.
This is a fantastic program, it's in existence for 10 years. The prior chief and, uh, some of the officers from the department approached me about getting involved with it, and I did. And we have a perfect example of what we teach these youngsters with Ms. Bens here.
I was just gonna say, I brought you the picture.
Her, uh, son and the husband were, I believe, up in Westminster at the Fire Carnival up there, and, uh, some perp grabbed the cash box and took off with it. Well, here comes the blue coast to take a report. They asked her husband, and just like normal, I didn't see anything. Young lad, just what we taught him, from head to toe, described it perfectly, and within 20 minutes, they made a lockup.
Wow.
And the Fraternal Order of Police, Maryland State Lodge, presented him with the plaque, and, uh, that's a perfect example of what we teach these youngsters, so.
Pretty awesome.
It's a good cause.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, I can't thank you enough for all the stuff, especially what's going on in this day and age with being alert and being aware, and of your surroundings and the training, and, and so many kids' lives, and thus, thank you so much for, for your service to the town. We hope you keep it up, because you, you're just a young fellow.
We will, trust me.
Right, we're counting on you. So you want to come on up, and we'll get a picture with, uh, Mr. Earl and the police chief? We can, you can be with our junior mayor and get a picture, we're gonna come on up, we'll come up with you. So we got a proclamation here for you, I better take my glasses, because we won't be able to read it. Do we need to get the mic to read it, so we get on TV maybe? Yeah, let's do that. You want to read it? Yeah, why don't you come up and read the proclamation for him? And then, um, then we'll get a picture with you.
Whereas on October 9th, 2018, the Sykesville Police Department completed 10th Annual Junior CSI Academy. The program was held at the Sykesville Middle School, was attended by 34 local middle school students. And whereas Detective Earl Cratch, a local resident, who is retired from the Baltimore Police Department, has participated as an instructor in all 10 years of the program. He does this on his own time and without compensation. And whereas Detective Cratch has been instrumental in the success and longevity of this program. He started with the former Sykesville Chief of Police, and has continued with the current chief for the last four years. And whereas Detective Cratch is personally involved in every aspect of the program, from participating in the pre-planning meetings, to attending each night of the program, to setting up mock crime scenes and grid searches, organizing and collecting mock evidence, to arranging the boxes of program materials, to loading and unloading the materials for each session. In short, he does it all. I've heard him say that before. And whereas, if not for his invaluable assistance, the Sykesville Police Department would not be able to provide this worthwhile program for our local youth. And whereas, last one, Detective Cratch's actions demonstrate the highest level of community service. Now therefore, we, the mayor and town council of the town of Sykesville, do hereby proclaim our gratitude detective, to Detective Earl Cratch, resident of Sykesville, for his commitment and service to the citizens of the town of Sykesville, proclaim this day, this 27th day of November in the year 2018.
And also the junior mayor, which is important, because this is junior CSI, so chief congratulates you and thanks you for the future. Yeah, there you go, look at that. Come on over, yeah. Was he doing any of the work? Sounds like you're doing everything, Earl.
He's the boss. That's what bosses do.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Any more pictures?
I got one more.
Thank you.
Thank you. Earl, thank you so much. We can't thank you enough, thank you so much, man, here, as always. Yep. Council wants to thank this round.
Well, I had two kids go through the program myself, so thank you very much.
This is an absolute.
He's been 10 years, minimum of 30 students, that's over 300 students, he's, he's personally, you know, he's affected in just 10 years, so. Huge.
It is.
He has gone here his wife with him, so.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I got you for another five years, right?
Yeah. All right. That's what it's all about. All right. Okay. 2018-85 is the audit, so that was awesome, that that's already done. Got them moved out. All right, and then our next item is 2018-86, the public hearing on Resolution 2018-11. This is for the annexation of the Buttercup Road property. I guess, do you want to?
So, well, this is for the, the public hearing. My suggestion would be to leave the public hearing open until after a decision is made or, uh, directive is given. And then if you all make a decision tonight, we can go back and close the public hearing so that we don't run into the same issue we ran into last time by closing it too soon.
Right. Okay, so we're gonna leave the public hearing open then?
Yes.
So that's this part here, we're just gonna leave that open.
Yes.
And we're gonna move on to the second part. 2018-87, and this is discussion of and action on the Resolution 2018-11 for the annexation of the Buttercup property.
Yes, so the, um, contract owners, purchasers are here again tonight. The last that you all decided was that you wanted to table the item and send it back to the Planning Commission to get further comment. It did go back to the Planning Commission. The major takeaway there was that the Planning Commission, a couple of them, recommended that, um, if you move forward with this annexation, they would like you to consider an- Um, our staff's recommendation is if you move in that direction and require that the full parcel be annexed, um, that you consider a potential tax abatement. I have spoken to the representative for the property owner. They, of course, are not in favor of having that piece of property annexed. They don't see the value in being annexed into the town and just being taxed. They don't plan to further develop that. It's currently industrial. Also to note, if we do move in this direction and you all decide that you do want to annex that entire parcel, we will have to go back through the process of getting comment from the state and the county on the full section of annexation. And we'd also would like to get the, the land purchasers agreement as well.
Okay.
Any questions? Everything else is, everything else is the same. That's the only new piece of information this evening.
Right. So I guess, um, did you, did you guys want to comment on this at all or?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
For the record, Jay Brooks, lady, the lady lady, Kurt Sinbrough, I represent the contract purchasers. And as to this most recent wrinkle, the suggestion from the planning commission, does you consider annexing the entire piece? I would say that the annexation petition that we filed is for the 9-point acres. It's expressly not for that additional amount. That's not for you. Obviously, you can deny our petition as it's, as it's placed, but I think it's really inappropriate to sort of try to strong our, we don't have any control over the people that own the 2.1.97 acre industrial piece. And that's not the petition that's in front of you. The petition in front of you is for the residential piece. We spent close to a year processing this annexation. We've gone to the county. We've gotten the county to consent to the R-7500. I mean, what's in front of you is our annexation petition, so I respectfully suggest that, um, denying it and saying start over, you know, is really not appropriate, although you certainly have the power to do that if you wish. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on particular issue.
I guess the, the one question I have, so this is all one owner though, correct?
Correct.
All the, yeah, so, I mean, so they do have control over the whole parcel, is my point, right? Like?
Well, my clients' petition are contract purchasers for just the nine acres.
Okay.
And the owners consented to the petition as to the nine acres. I do not represent them. I cannot speak for them. I am astute from the.
So the owners have not, or have not consented to do the other?
They, in fact, do not, they have said they do not want to do the other piece. They are opposed to it. When I spoke to their representative, Dennis Boyle, I have not spoken to the owners directly, but he, he is representing them and he spoke on their behalf when, when we talked after this initially came up from the planning commission. I talked to him the next day. He was also at the planning commission, and after speaking with them, he confirmed that in fact, they do not want to move in this direction.
Even with the tax abatement?
Of course, they would like a tax abatement, but my, my management suggestion would not be to have an indefinite tax abatement. It would probably be for a five-year period or until, unless they, um, change the, the purpose of that site or do some further development sooner than that, then of course, we find that tax abatement null and void. But to do, put a perpetual abatement on that property, I think sets a bad precedent. So according to them, they don't want to be a part of the town. They don't see the benefit, um, you know, as we can imagine, and to know that the tax abatement wouldn't be in perpetuity, they're not in favor of it, so.
I think the benefit to them is being able to sell this parcel as a residential piece. And I think from the planning commission's argument was they want, while they don't want to give up the industrial piece, if they've given it up and doing the residential, they wanted to capture some industrial base which we don't have in the town. So they were trying to make it palatable in the sense that why are we just doing this one little piece? We shouldn't be doing piecemeal because we are trying to get continuity too. So there was some arguing about trying to get contiguous flow through Buttercup. So I think they had a multi-pronged, faceted piece to that, so. And again, I don't, I mean, I think that was their initial thing is to make it more palatable. I think there could be some consideration for even the taxes for a period of time, but anyway, I think that's the reasoning behind where they came from, so hopefully that would work, but I don't know what this body's thinking about annexation at all, so I don't know. Do you want to proceed?
Well, the problem is we have to start over. I mean, if the planning commission, which doesn't really have the authority to do that, this body has the authority to approve the annexation or not to approve it. Planning commission solely gives a recommendation which you can accept or reject as you want. If you were to decide, we start over from square one. We start over from another six months, eight months, nine months. And I really think there's a big advantage to the town to have this nine acres of R-7500 come into the town, for you all to control, you through the planning commission primarily, to control the site plan and, and the submittals that are made and to be satisfied with it. You to get the tax advantage of being in the town. You know, I really think, um, that to send this back to square one. Now, an alternative might be, um, to approve this annexation. Well, I have a problem with that. We have contract zoning issues, which is a problem. We're sort of trying to be proactive and figure out a way to make this work, but I'm not, I'm not sure on balance that, I mean, if you reject us, we have to get together with the owner and see if they're willing to do it. They may be, they may not be. We start from square one. We start with a new annexation petition. We go in front of the county commissioners again, a new body of county commissioners by the time we get to them, asking for yet another.
Well, a new one's here, so he's getting the full. He'll be fully up to speed.
He's one of those.
Yes, but he'll be able to carry the message.
Well, I really, I guess I would.
And I think that will defer to the town. I mean, my hope is they'll somewhat defer to the town if that, and that was the whole point, but at the same time, I, yeah, so, but I hear what you're saying. I mean.
I, I think you have a legitimate, good petition in front of you that is deserving or being approved. I, I really think the planning commission's kind of going off on a, on a tangent, saying that we want something different. Well, we don't have that in front of you, so you're really making us go back to square I would strongly suggest that you approve the annexation where it is.
So I guess my concern is, is what if it's not approved? Like if this doesn't get approved, because would you, would, and then would you be willing to take some direction from the council if the other way is the way they want to go with the full parcel? Like, I don't know. Like, I don't know if you get a consent to do that or if we approve it with the change. That's not before us.
You should, your vote should either be up or down, yes or no, and then we can have conver, if you all then want to decide, Aretha, go and talk to them about coming back with a different petition. We can do that, but I don't think you should make a conditional approval. Either approve it or deny it.
All right.
I have a quick question with respect to the additional 2. whatever acres it is.
1.97.
Thank you, 1.97.
To be precise.
To be precise. Um, a question about that additional portion of, or additional parcel. Is that by chance the section that we were throwing around the idea of possibly vetting with respect to EPW or is that?
It's, it's not, it's a part of that site, but I don't think it's that particular piece.
There's already a commercial building on there with a lease.
Yeah, that, that piece is more their annexation. That's where you're talking about, from my understanding.
That piece has a user on it.
Yes, no, I know.
Like the other one does.
I was looking for the information that Aretha made. I wanted her to make that aware to everyone at the table that the portion that we were discussing at our last meeting is not, it is part of the petition, the part, the parcel that's being requested on the petition for annexation currently.
Great. So I, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I think I've said it in previous meetings before. This is, this is part of the Sykesville growth area that was designated in our master plan. Uh, we have a builder that wants to spend some money in our town and develop the land. Uh, I believe the annexation petition is done, like you said, took a year. Due diligence was done. The county commissioners agreed on it. Um, I think it's a great benefit for the town. It connects Freedom Park with Main Street via sidewalks, and it's a good place to extend the townhouses that are already there. There's no residential neighborhood close by to complain about more townhouses going in. And I, I think we should approve it the way it is.
I'd just like to say that the planning commission felt very strongly about this, and there was total support for the residential piece. It's just that, um, we want to have the control over that 1.97 acres as well because if that owner decides to change what he's doing there, then we have no say over that. They can do whatever they want on that 1.97 acres, I mean, within the zoning. So the planning commission absolutely wanted the residential piece, but they want the whole parcel for annexation.
So that owner would have to go up to the county commissioners to get the zoning changed though. So, and they would, because it's designated in the Sykesville, um, expansion area, the county will, will not change the zoning on that until they will defer it to us, I believe. That was one of the.
Right.
The county commissioners made a decision.
But they can use existing zoning.
Right, we're not trying to change zoning on that piece right now.
All right.
Um, and I don't think the process would be as long as, um, what has been projected, especially since it's already gone before the commissioners. Granted, there are new commissioners, but again, like the mayor said, I think they would defer, or I would hope they would defer to our wishes and what our plans are.
I have a general concern that there, unless I'm mistaken, no one in this room is here for the open hearing on this comment or to comment on this, correct? Um, I have, I have a concern that, that perhaps maybe we haven't really received very much town feedback or input at all, um, and I'm, and I'm wondering if, if we've done a decent job of broadcasting the open hearing shy of it being an agenda item on our.
We are legally required to publish it, uh, twice, so we have published the original one, the original two, uh, two or three times, Carrie, you'll have to remind me. And then we again had to publish this one, and we have to publish it according to certain standards, so just not on our agenda. So we follow the, the required state law around annexation process, and that's how we publicize it. You know, we've had a couple of comments, um, on one of the previous public hearings, but it has not been a huge response. You're absolutely correct, but we've done everything, um, that we're legally required to do by, you know, publicizing.
I know, that's true, Aretha, yeah.
Yeah, but you're right. We haven't done anything.
I, I think this is a really big deal for, for the residents, uh, whether they live in close approximation to this parcel or, or anywhere within the, within the, the Sykesville proper. I, I just, I feel like it would be, um, short-sighted on, on our parts as their representatives to speak when we really don't have, uh, their feedback, and I don't know, maybe we, maybe we should be searching for it or broadcasting it in a, in more than the bare minimum or state-required ways. That's my, that's a concern I wanted to express.
I respectfully disagree with that. I think we've done plenty of advertising and we sent this back to the planning commission, and that was additional time. I think there's been ample opportunity for the public to come to our meetings or the planning commission and have their say about this parcel. That's just my feeling.
Yep, I do tend to agree. The meeting is a bit open. Yeah. So, um, any other questions for the petitioners or?
No.
Okay, so I guess do you want us to take a vote on this now then, on this petition?
When you're ready.
Okay, so there being no further? Yes, so, all right, all those in favor of?
There's no motion.
Huh?
There's no motion.
There's no motion?
You need to make, someone needs to make a motion.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. Okay, so let's make a motion.
What's the number, mayor? I'll make the motion. I'm sorry.
No, you got it. It is number 2018-7 is, uh, 87 is the item, and the resolution is 2018-11. So it would be a motion for approval of Resolution Number 2018-11 for the annexation of the Buttercup property as proposed. Okay, I'm sorry. So I'll make a motion for the resolution of Number 2018-11 for the annexation of the Buttercup property as is.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Might want to do a voice, a voice.
Yeah, we better do it hand really, right? So.
All right, so, yes.
All right.
Yes.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to be opposed, only because I want the other piece. I would have supported it with the commercial. Um, all right, so any opposed? I mean, any abstentions, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, so it does pass as opposed. Thank you for all the efforts on it. I'm sorry it didn't work. I don't know, um, if the other piece, if it would pass.
So that's something that we can discuss.
It sounds like it would pass with the other piece, but I know that's a challenge for you guys. I don't know, but as far as the owner.
I mean, is it, I mean, that's a lot of money to come back and do this all over.
Well, that's why I wanted, I mean, is there some way to get a consensus? Yeah, from the council on that? Yes, I agree with that.
Yes.
Me too. So.
I mean, I would.
We would, I think we would approve it. I mean, if that, yeah, I hate to send you out with all that, right, but I think I would. We're all committing to support. Well, not all, but there's a consensus, majority.
There's an election between now and next year.
Yes, there is.
Yes, in May. How past, if it, does it really think it's going to take that long now? Does Julia, I mean, is that realistic or are you thinking it could go sooner than that?
I think they're here already, so.
I mean, to add the other piece?
They have to restart the petition process.
They have to get the property owners.
We have to talk to the property owner.
Yeah, because they're 100%.
Control the 1.97 acres. If we can get a response to them in two days, we can file five, but.
All right, we'll see what you can do. I mean, hopefully it can work now.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Okay, the junior mayor has said it's time to go. Hit the hammer. All right, it's duly approved.
No, no.
We're out of here, really.
She has to go.
Thank you so much for coming. We'll see you all in December eight.
Somebody wants to build in our.
But you're referring to something that doesn't exist in the way that it did then.
Yes. All right, give me my hammer back. All right.
That doesn't matter.
All right, back to what are here.
Okay, we're still in session.
Calm down, it's not time to go yet. I mean, it was exciting for a minute, wasn't it? I was with you. I was getting ready to head out. All right, so it is almost time to go. Counsel, uh, and manager comments.
Well, can you actually go back and close the public hearing since you all did vote?
Okay, so, yeah, we will go ahead and close the public hearing on 2018-86, Resolution Number 28-11, uh, the annexation for Buttercup property since we've already.
Do you need a motion for that?
Made a decision.
Please.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. So that's closed. All right, um, counsel and manager comments relating to any public interest, uh, items, regional civic charitable events, staff recognition, commendation of citizens, traffic issues?
I have something.
Yes, ma'am.
If I can. I have something, if I can. I just wanted to say kudos to our public works department. We had a little snow event between now and the last meeting.
Little tester.
Little tester there. It was more than anyone expected, and they still handled it, I think, wonderfully. The town manager did get stuck in the parking lot, but I was rescued fairly quickly. But as far as the streets, we heard no complaints. Everything was done before people got home. Thank goodness they were stuck in rush hour, so we were able to kind of get stuff fixed up. But so, kudos to our public works guys. They were out there. Mark Einhauser jumped in a snowplow and helped out. We did recognize that there was, there's an issue with one of our trucks. We had a snowplow fall off three times, which takes about 30 minutes to get back on, and is not something that you want falling on your streets. But lesson learned, and we will be coming to you for CIP request shortly, so. But they did a great job, so just wanted to give them a shout out.
Yeah, thank you.
I was roaming Carroll County that day, and when I came back home, it was like it never snowed. The roads were so possible here in town versus the big ice.
Agreed. I ran some errands, thinking everybody's going to be home, and the county was a mess. But not the town of Sykesville.
So now I want to give kudos to Aretha and the staff for taking care of the train tracks that were on Main Street, the old train tracks, and it not all taken care of. It's paved over, it's perfect. Weeks ago, I was like, I'm going to lose a tire driving over this thing, but it's, it's been done. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks. I'm glad we could work with the state, yep.
Yeah, that's very nice.
That was a long time coming.
You're welcome.
I'd like to just make an announcement, especially since we're being recorded, regarding the Gatehouse Museum and their search for volunteers ages 14 and older. They're looking for anyone with skills that include organizing, scanning documents and photos, typing, using computer software, simple photography, research, and fact checking. Other useful skills include interest in history, restoring furniture and objects, gardening, cleaning, and much more. So give the youngsters an opportunity to earn some, some.
Service hours.
Service hours, thank you. And others the opportunity to get to know the Gatehouse and the town of Sykesville and its history a little bit better. If you're interested, you can reach out to the curators, Andrea and Jack White, by email or myself.
All righty.
And on a sad note, I'd like to offer condolences to the mayor on the passing of his mother-in-law.
Thank you, yeah, it's been a rough. Thank you. Appreciate that. Been a rough time for the holidays, but. Thank you very much, yeah. Anything else?
Nothing.
All righty. All right, so the meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions of the Annotated Code of Merits, Section 3-305B, one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And two, to protect the privacy or reputation of individuals with respect to the matter that is not related to public business. Seven, to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. I'll see Dennis here.
Dennis is actually not going to be here, so we will be talking about town-owned property. Since it was advertised, we can discuss it because it's still an exception on the closed agenda list. It's still the same item, farm and home. We'll be talking with the less C on the property as opposed to Dennis.
Where a contract is awarded or bids are opened, discuss a matter directly related to negotiation strategy with contents of a bid proposal if public discussion or disclosure would adversely affect or impact ability of a public party to participate in a competitive bidding or proposal process. All right, so the items are consult with legal counsel, town-owned property, privacy, the BNO railroad on town car property, railcar on town property, privacy, warfield marketing and development update, personnel, confidential personal information, negotiation strategy, negotiation strategy for essential sale of town property. All right, do we have a motion for a five-minute recess?
We're going to be concerned at 10, by the way.
Okay, yeah, we're going to need a 10-minute recess.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess.